Councilman McEldowney, Councilwoman Elliott.
Present.
Councilman Douglas.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. All of us are here except for Mr. McEldowney. I have not heard from him yet this evening, but I am open for a motion to excuse him. If he does show up, we will make the record straight that he has joined us. Mr. Amador.
Move to...
Excuse?
Excuse, sorry, I didn't say abstain. Excuse Councilwoman McEldowney for the time being.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
Have a motion and second to allow for that excused absence. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I'd like to ask everybody to please rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I'm going to ask the staff to please pass around the microphone and allow the audience to introduce themselves.
Roy Ramirez.
Sandra Ramirez.
Kami Ramirez.
David Pox.
Elena Pox.
Mara Pox.
Sophie Pox.
Jennifer Pox.
Xavier Ramirez.
Larson Fox.
Bob Grant.
Tom Green.
Tony Jarstad.
Michelle Hooks.
Alan Hooks.
Robert Jarstad.
Colton Hooks.
Chobba Molnar.
Shelley Holland.
Maria Gonzalez.
Carol Martinez.
Stephanie Levine.
Julia Garza.
Maria Supia.
Janaye Benjamin.
Lisa Benjamin.
Ayesha Augustine.
Alie Augustine.
Leandra Augustine.
Ray Keith.
Thank you.
Laura Richardson.
Maria DeAndre, Public Works.
Cheryl Carstens, Finance.
Carolyn Keith, Parks and Recreation.
Parks, Recreation and Golf.
Robert Braun.
Linda Brown.
Kathy Blakeman, Human Resources.
Angela Brandt.
Deborah Salzer.
Kevin Layden.
Kristen Layden.
Dan Schiedinger.
Julie Headley.
Billy Guerrero.
Mackenzie Guerrero.
Kristy Guerrero.
Braden Guerrero.
Cryoladen.
Cannon Headley.
Gareth Wickworth.
Kathleen Wickworth.
Raiden Wickworth.
Paul Heebink, Buffalo Run Golf Course.
Garrett Hoffman, Buffalo Run Golf Course.
Carter Cease.
Noah Cease.
Ayesha Essabaggers.
Kurt Essabaggers.
Luis Essabaggers.
Denise Keenan.
Zachary Keenan.
Great, thank you, and again, thank you all for being here. We're going to start into our agenda, and we start with proclamations and recognitions this evening. First on the list is United Capital Credit Check recognition. I'd like to invite the United Power representatives forward. I see there are several of them here to present the check, and I'd like to invite the council to come down and join me with the representatives after they've been given a chance to say a few words. Mr. Green?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
I really appreciate you giving us the opportunity to speak with you tonight. With me, I have two of our directors, as you know. United Power is a cooperative, and we are governed by the members that are by power from us, and those directors are elected from the membership. With me, I have Bob Grant, and also I have Dave Rose. And they're going to give a little bit of this presentation, but again, this is where we like to point out the cooperative difference. As I said, United Power is electric cooperative. We're owned by the people it serves. We try to serve our electricity at the least cost possible. And so, here tonight, we're going to try to give you one of the benefits of that.
Great.
Thanks, Tom. I'm Bob Grant. Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of the council.
Thank you.
Seen some faces I recognize. And I also recognize your police chief. I remember when I was in the DA's office when he was a young patrolman up there in Brighton. So, you've done good. You've done well with that.
Yeah.
United Power serves over 11,500 meters here in Commerce City. Above that, almost 2,000 of our commercial and industrial accounts. We expect to go over the 12,000 mark here before very long. We've been your partners in supplying electricity for a long time here in this city. We have 41 accounts in 2015, and we expect to go well over that in 2016. I have the replica check here, and I think Mr. Rose has something he wants.
Yes, I do. Logan, nice seeing you all.
Hi, Dave.
Wasn't too long ago, saw many of you. Yes, I wanted to say a few words. It's great for me to have an opportunity to be here with you all. I had, a couple of weeks ago, I had an opportunity. We had a booth at the kite day in reunion, and I just wanted to mention, I had a chance to go out and participate in that and meet with a lot of the people, and I was very impressed. I was very impressed with the amount of involvement they had with the youth in all the activities. United Power was able to handle some pretty cool stuff to kids, and I know that Steve Douglas's neighborhood, and it was great to be there. People are really excited and very positive from what I saw towards United Power, and so, we're glad to be able to serve you and hope we continue to have that positive relationship in the future. Yes, this, I guess since 1997, we've returned you $77,385. And so, tonight, we have a check for $11,681.64, and it's all in cash, and I'll just take... No. It's not. But we really enjoy serving Commerce City. Hopefully, as things continue to develop, we can continue to serve you in the future. And thank you for having us here tonight.
Well, I'd like to say thank you to you all for serving on that board, and Tom, the stuff that you step up and you're a part of in this community, you're Rotarian, you're always available if we have questions, if our residents have questions, and United Power has been a great partner for this community. And I know you're going to be tasked with providing more and more as this community continues to grow, and I know you're prepared for that. The solar program that you have, the rebate programs for buying the newer updated appliances, cost-efficient appliances. So, I'm appreciative of all those programs. The LED lighting program that you do, I mean, you just do a lot to try to make it helpful on people's bills if they update and try to keep, you know, conserving power. So, we appreciate everything you do as well. I'd like to invite the council to come down with me, and we'll take a picture and accept that check. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I just have a quick question. Is it still possible for citizens to purchase those solar panels to help offset and keep them in the solar farm?
We still have a solar garden in the front of our office where you... Those panels, we still have some that you can available to buy. But my really big announcement, and I'm sorry, I forgot to say it. Next Monday, at 2:00 PM, we are going to have the ribbon cutting for a huge solar farm that we're going to be unveiling. It's right outside of Fort Lupton, 90 acres of solar panels that are going to be going into the United Power system, and we're really excited about that. We invite anyone that would like to come by and see that. 2:00, Monday, the 26th, we're going to have the ribbon cutting for that. So, we're really excited about that.
Great.
It's one of the things we do. We keep wanting to move forward, and it's what our members asked for, and we want to deliver.
Great, thank you. And for the record, I'd like to let everybody know that Mr. McEldowney is with us, so we are a full council this evening, and we're coming down to visit with you guys. It's not going to him. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Buffalo Run Golf Course Junior Golf Team Recognition. So, I'd like to invite Golf Manager Paul Hebnek forward to the podium.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council. It's a real pleasure to be here this evening. I would like to actually ask Garrett Hoffman to introduce the team, but before he comes up here and does that, I want to take just a minute and say a very sincere thank you to all of you on council. Over the years, you have encouraged and supported junior golf in Commerce City, and we now have an expanded program that includes partnerships with both Adam City High School and Prairie View High School. Their boys' and girls' golf team practices at Buffalo Run each year. We also have a partnership with the nationally-recognized First Tee Program, which is really an introduction for the younger kids to kind of learn how to play the game of golf. We have our annual week-long junior golf program, which is a lot of fun, and of course, the PGA Junior League, which Garrett is going to tell you a little bit about tonight. In each of these programs, we not only try to teach golf or help kids who have already been introduced to golf how to improve their skills, but we also try to teach some core values such as sportsmanship, honesty, integrity, respect, and it's really in large part due to the efforts from the golf professional staff and, of course, the kids for learning that these values get transferred. So, without any further ado, I would like to ask the first assistant golf professional and head golf coach from Buffalo Run, Mr. Garrett Hoffman, to come up, please.
Thank you, Paul. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hi. I'd like to take this opportunity to first thank you all for having us out here this evening and recognizing the accomplishments of the Buffalo Run PGA Junior League champions for 2016. So, thank you for taking time out of your day to recognize us. I do sincerely appreciate it. I'd next like to take this time to thank Carolyn Keith and Paul Hebnek for giving me the opportunity over these last 12 years to work at Buffalo Run. Some of you may know that I live on the golf course. I've been at Buffalo Run for what seems like forever. It is my home. I care deeply about this city, the golf course, and all who visit, and especially these kids. So, thank you, Carolyn. Thank you, Paul. I'd next like to thank the parents of all the kids, not only for being here tonight, what a great turnout, but for your dedication, for your supporting me over these past few months with your kids, being at all the matches. I just wanted to thank you all for being here tonight and your support of me. Finally, and most importantly, the kids. I just want to congratulate our team. We went undefeated this season, 6-0 in our matches. We are the Denver North undefeated champions, so congratulations, kids. As proud as I am of the undefeated season, I am way more proud of how these kids have handled themselves over these last couple of months. You know, Paul had mentioned that we not only teach golf skills here at Buffalo Run, we teach life skills. Our kids showed more sportsmanship this year than I've ever seen. They conduct themselves with respect. They... The honesty and integrity they have out on the course and in practice is tremendous. For that, I am most proud of our kids. Big round of applause for the kids. With that said, if you don't mind, I'd like to call the kids up and let them introduce themselves and maybe say how long they've been playing at Buffalo Run Golf Course. So, without further ado, team, come on up.
We'll start with you.
My name is Carter. I've been playing for four years now.
Awesome, thank you, Carter.
I am Xavier Ramirez. I've been playing golf at Buffalo Run for one year.
I've been play... Or, I'm Larson Fox. I've been playing at Buffalo Run for six years.
I'm Cannon Headley, and I've been playing golf at Buffalo Run for a long time.
I'm Cryoladen. I've been playing golf at Buffalo Run for six years.
I'm Robert Jarstad, and I've been playing golf for about, probably, like, four years, so.
I'm Gareth, and I've been playing golf at Buffalo Run for about nine years.
I'm Braden, and I've been playing golf at Buffalo Run for four years.
I'm Colton Hooks, and I've been playing golf for at least six years.
I'm Ayesha Essabaggers, and I've been playing golf at Buffalo Run for four years.
My name is Zachary Keenan, and I've been playing golf for two years.
Congratulations again, team. Once again, I just want to sincerely thank you for having us out tonight. It's truly an honor to be a part of this team and Buffalo Run Golf Course. So, thank you so much for recognizing the accomplishments of our undefeated 2016 PGA Junior League team. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. So, before you all sit down, we'd like the team to come up, and I'm going to have the council come down. We're going to take a picture with all these fine young people that are learning to play golf. It sounds like they play golf better than me if they've been doing it for four to six years. I don't want to see them on the course because it would make me look bad. But I think it's great because, you know, golf instills some of those life skills, and I think sportsmanship's a huge piece of that. So, I'm honored to come down and take a picture and congratulate these young men and women for their efforts and learning the game of golf, especially at our hometown Buffalo Run. So, if the council will please join me down front.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And we'll go ahead and allow all the families to... We'll take a quick, not a break, but we'll just take a pause, allow everybody to make their way out. All right, moving on to our next item. We have Bridges of Silence, Proclamation for the Bridges of Silence. I'd like to invite members of the organization who are present to come forward, please. And we'll start by having our city attorney read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation. Whereas Lisa Benjamin, Executive Director of Bridges of Silence, has dedicated 27 years of service to the Commerce City community, and whereas Bridges of Silence began in 1989 as a sign language choir cultivating communication and understanding with the deaf community, training over 600 children in sign language, and whereas Lisa Benjamin, her family and staff also built the Hands of Hope Food Bank within Bridges of Silence, feeding over 3,000 families with dignity and respect for two decades, and whereas Bridges of Silence taught Commerce City children to run the community garden, growing and harvesting fresh produce to sell or give to families in need through their food bank, providing skills in self-sufficiency, business, and community service, and whereas Bridges of Silence offered free tutoring and academic summer camps during the past 15 years and offered alternative high school opportunities through Hope Online, graduating 120 high school students in the last decade to find academic success outside of the traditional public school environment. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City celebrates and recognizes Lisa Benjamin, her children Ayesha, Leandra, Alie Augustine, and Janaye Benjamin, and the Bridges of Silence staff for 27 years of service to the city of Commerce City.
All right. There you have it, council, is the proclamation. Is there a motion? Mr. McEldowney?
I would move to approve that proclamation.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is granted. All right. Now, we have done a proclamation. I'd like to allow you the opportunity to have the microphone to tell us anything you'd like to tell us about your organization, and we're glad that you're here this evening.
Well, it's an honor to be here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. It has just been amazing serving the Commerce City students, children, neighbors. To be able to just touch people's lives is an amazing thing, and so, we've been able to be a part of that. Bridges of Silence, we started as a deaf ministry almost 20 years ago, and so, our goal was to connect hearing with those who were deaf and to create an environment where those who were deaf could come and everybody spoke their language. And so, that's how we started out. But along the way, we had always worked with children and really been concerned with the amount of children who were failing, and so, wanted to be that safety net for those kids, to say, you know, we're right here with you, and we're going to do all we can to help support you in the school that you're at or whatever it is that you're doing. So, we have been truly blessed to just be here for this amount of time and to serve. And this evening, Ray Keith, he is one of our Board of Directors, and so, I'll let him say something.
Thank you.
Thank you all again for recognizing Bridges of Silence. It's been a pleasure being on the board. I met Ms. Benjamin probably close to 15 years ago and was really impressed with the work that she was doing here in the community, making sure that students were getting educated, having those opportunities in summers, having after-school programming. She also helped students get to Africa. So, again, she's really impacted families, children, and our community here in Commerce City, so I'm just proud to be a part of that.
Great. First of all, thank you to Bridges of Silence. We know you've made a difference in our community, and we know that there are people that are better off because of Bridges of Silence. I know that every year when we used to do the grants, I would always see Bridges of Silence on there. We always tried to give a little back to Bridges of Silence. But it's because you've done so much in our community, and I personally want to thank you for all of the effort over the years. Is there any council members that have anything they'd like to say at this time before I ask you all to come down? We'll have the council come down, and we'll take a picture of you with your proclamation.
Thank you so much.
So, council, join me down front. Mr. Douglas?
Yes. Yes, Ms. Benjamin, thank you very much for being part of the community, and hope you continue those efforts to reach out to those family in need because, you know, it's really hard here in Colorado as far as our economy and everything. It's a struggle for families. Things are tight. So, I appreciate what you've done and continue to do.
Thank you so much.
Okay, council. Okay, now, next item on the agenda is going to be another proclamation, and this time for National Hispanic Heritage Month. I'd like to invite Maria Gonzalez forward to accept the proclamation. While she's on her way up, I'd like to say that Friday, I had the pleasure of going over to Alsup Elementary where they had a National Hispanic Heritage Month event. They had the high school mariachi band, some of the smaller kids playing their recorders. I was very impressed with the amount of donuts and snacks that were provided by Mi Pueblo that were donated to the schools. I mean, it was tables and tables full of some of the best-looking donuts you've ever seen, but the auditorium was completely packed with parents and kids, and it was a great event at Alsup. And I, from my understanding, Alsup has a very large amount of Hispanic students that attend there, so I was glad to be there representing Commerce City for Hispanic Heritage Month. But enough about me and Alsup. I'm going to turn it over to Maria. There you go.
You get the two Marias.
That's good.
It's been exciting to be Hispanic right now in Commerce City with the growth that we have, with the opportunity that we have in this community, and the fact, you know, that our senior manager acknowledges the growth and necessities of this community and is willing to sit down and participate and listen to how can we work together and how could we be better, especially, you know, close to 50% Hispanic population. I think that this community has really been building for... Uh, I think that this community has really been, uh, building for years and years, generations. We have third, fourth, fifth generation Hispanics that continue to contribute to the, uh, community development, economic development of this community, and I'm very proud to, to work with Maria Subia for twenty-five years already, close to. And it's, I, I, it's important that you, as the mayor and city council, values our Hispanic population in this community. And although, uh, we might not have, you know, the room full of Hispanics, uh, in this event today, they're home, they're working, they're going to school, they're contributing in so many different ways to the betterment of their families. And, uh, Maria and I are here today because we want to make sure that this continues to be a tradition, that the city acknowledges the contributions that we, the Hispanic community, provide to the betterment of our city.
The other Maria?
The other Maria. Um, so I just want to say that I have lived in Commerce City all my life, and I will tell you, when I first grew up here and was going to Monaco Elementary in kindergarten, I was the only Spanish-speaking student, if you could believe it or not, in that school in that grade. And, um, once I learned English, I became a, an interpreter and started helping some of the other kids that were coming into the, to the city. So to actually see that growth from that point till now, it is amazing, and, um, and it's very productive. The majority of our families, um, care as much about Commerce City as those of us who have lived here all, all our lives. And so, yes, proud to be, um, Mexican in Commerce City and Hispanic, um, however you, you'd like to, to say, but amongst everything else, I think that, um, just that acknowledgement of the fact that we are contributors to the community just as much as anybody else is very important to, to our, to our families. So thank you all for the proclamation and for taking the time to do this.
Thank you. Now, on to the proclamation. I'd like to ask the city attorney, please read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation, whereas Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month each year by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas the observation started in nineteen sixty-eight and was expanded in nineteen eighty-eight to cover a thirty-day period starting on September fifteenth and ending on October fifteenth. And whereas Hispanics have had a profound and positive influence on our country through their strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and service, they have enhanced and shaped our national character with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their community. And whereas these positive contributions are evident within the Commerce City community, where thriving businesses, cultural arts, and neighborhoods exist, creating a meaningful social fabric of which all residents can engage and learn. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City declares September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, as National Hispanic Heritage Month, recognizing the importance of the Hispanic community within Commerce City.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Mr. Bullock?
Move to accept the proclamation.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas? I have a motion and a second to, uh, approve the proclamation as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. And, uh, just like I told the young children at Alsop Elementary on Friday, everybody's heritage is very important, and you should always retain some of that heritage to know where you came from, be able to pass some of that on to your, to your children and their, and your grandchildren. Um, a, again, I grew up in these schools as well, was born and raised in Commerce City. And at Central Elementary, we had all kinds of heritage, uh, celebrations. Um, I still remember wrapping ribbons around the maypole, um, which we don't do anymore, but, um, there, it, there's a lot to be said about your heritage and, and to be proud of that heritage. So, thank you both for coming in this evening. Will you please come forward? We'll come down and, and take a picture with both of you as we give you the proclamation.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on in the agenda, the, uh, next item is the citizen communication. Let's see here. Per our policy, citizen communication is the time in our agenda for the public to address the council on business and affairs of the city. As we approach the election season, council would like to remind candidates for election office, elected office, that political activity in city buildings is prohibited per resolution two thousand and eight dash sixty. This includes campaigning from the podium. Uh, one other item is the city council is not able to hear any comments on land use matters that are before or may come before city council. So I'd ask you, please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing to give testimony. And, uh, third, please give your name and address for the record. Keep your comments limited to three minutes, and, uh, thank you. So, um, first of all, the, there's a new part in the, in, in my laying out, the citizen communication about land use matters, and there may be someone in the audience, but I know there's probably several people at home, um, that I just wanted to mention, uh, two brief issues that, that we know are out there. Um, there is a land use case that will be going before the Planning Commission. Um, it is on our agenda for this evening, what, but we have to continue that because Planning Commission continued it on their end. So what happens is land use issues go before the Planning Commission, there's a public hearing, we get a recommendation, and the council will, will hear that, uh, case in a quasi-judicial matter. So we don't want to take testimony outside of that hearing, um, because it could cause one or more of us to have to recuse ourselves from voting on that matter. Uh, those two items that I'm talking about, uh, one would be, uh, the Crown Transportation, um, facility that's, uh, being, um, considered by the Planning Commission. And number two would be a housing, uh, development, um, up near Foxton Village. So if any of you are here, I would tell you that, um, please pay attention to the website as to when those public hearings are going to be, and be able to come in and testify at that time. And you can always go to our planning department and ask questions of the, uh, the planners in the planning department, of Chris Kramer specifically. So thank you. Now, I'm gonna go ahead and go through the list, ask you to come forward, state that name and address for the record, and we will, uh, move forward. Um, the first one I have on here is Tom Green, but he was with United Power and already gave us the, uh, check, so, and I know he's left, so, um, we, we won't have Tom Green come up a second time. How about, uh, Stephanie, seventy-two-hundred Quebec? Please come forward, and good evening.
Oh, it's good, okay. Good evening, my name is Stephanie Levine, um, here's the school address, seventy-two-hundred Quebec Parkway. I'm the student council sponsor for Adams City High School, and, um, introducing two of our students as well.
Hello, my name's Carol Martinez, I'm student body president at Adams City High School, and, uh, um, oh, sorry, my address is five-nine-three-three Newport Street. I've been in the, um, district for my entire life, I've lived here my entire life, and as you guys know, uh, we are planning the homecoming festivities and the upcoming, um, parade and the dance and powder puff and the bonfire, well, not the bonfire this year, sorry. And so we just wanted to formally invite you to all of these events, because as part of the city, you guys are a huge part of, um, how we make things happen, and so, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Julia Garza, she's chair of the, uh, parade committee, so she has a couple of things to say.
Great, thank you.
Uh, thank you for having me, I'm Julia Garza, my address is seven-one-three-one Jasmine Street, and it would mean a lot for you guys all to be there and to be involved with everything that we're doing, 'cause you guys really contribute a lot to everything we do.
Great. Now, I, I, I do have a few questions. Number one, I, I did receive some phone calls, and I want to make sure that you guys are aware, uh, the bonfire thing, it's not the city didn't deny that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, just, because the bonfire's a fun thing. Unfortunately, our county sheriff has put a, a burn ban in effect, um, so, and, and I'm not, this isn't just for you, there's people at home and people in the audience that are watching, I want them to understand why there wouldn't be a bonfire this year, 'cause there's a, a class-two burn ban in effect, and they can't issue a permit for bonfires this year. Um, so I, I'm, I'm sorry you're gonna not have your bonfire this year, but hopefully you filled it with another evening of fun of some, some sort. Um, now, when it comes to, uh, homecoming, um, is there certain things you want us to be at and places you want us to be at at specific times? Um, normally, we show up for the parade and ride in the parade, um, and things, things of that nature, but, uh, if there's specific things, uh, if you have a detailed outline of what, what's happening and when, and if you can make sure that the city gets a copy of, of what that outline is, that the city can shoot that out, and we can make sure it's on our calendars, and, and, uh, the council members and myself will try to make to as many events as, as we can.
Uh, we can do that, and we also have personal invitations for all of you guys.
Oh, great.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Come on up.
Um, so the invitations have the, each event laid out with their time and date, and there's also, each of you also got a flyer, um, that's posted on our websites, all over our school, all over the schools, um, all over each of their class pages, has all of our Pack the House games, um, our events, it even has our Spirit Day themes, so if you feel like participating, you're more than welcome.
Great. Thank you. And, uh, you have proper funding for all of your events this year?
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Um, we're working on it. Um, I did reach out to a couple councilmen to potentially, um, see if you guys could help us out with a few things that we might need for parade.
That's why I brought it up.
Yeah, um, so we have been in contact about a couple things that just, um, help the parade run smoothly, porta-potties for the people that are out there, you know, for three hours waiting for the parade to start, um, things like golf carts for us to make sure that lineup's running smoothly and, um, things like that. Details, logistics?
All right. I'm gonna go to the council real quick, and I see several of them have lit their lights up to, to comment. Mr. Amador?
So, uh, thank you, uh, Mrs. Levine and, um, students of Adams fourteen. Um, they did, we have been in communication, and I want to thank you, Stephanie, for, um, outreach to myself and Councilman Douglas on a couple of requests, and, um, I have to commend you on, uh, the short turnaround and the timely fashion that you did for the requests of, um, some, I'm gonna call it porta-potties, barricades, couple golf carts, and some miscellaneous, I'm gonna call that printing. And so I think now would be the appropriate time, um, to make a request from the dais for possibly to allocate five hundred dollars to the school districts to offset some of the parade costs, and so that would be in the form of a motion right now.
All right. I have a motion on the floor, is there a second? 'Cause I have so many lit up, please just raise your hands. Uh, Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize five hundred dollars, um, from the city council to, uh, the student body of Adams fourteen for their homecoming parade. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Now, with that, uh, that's, that's good, 'cause now you have a little bit of money and it'll help you out.
Yes, thank you so much.
Um, one of the things I think is important, because we're trying to do this with all, uh, different organizations within our community, we have the QCF, which is the Quality Community Foundation, and, uh, the school, uh, your, your program, you would have the opportunity to put in for a grant into that Quality Community Foundation, and, um, they, every year, they, they do a grant, and you can put it in for parade needs, and if that's an ongoing need, that you would need something like five hundred dollars or a thousand, whatever that need would be, um, I think it would probably be very good for the student council to actually go through a grant application and, and turn it in and ha, and so we can make sure, you can get that information from our third floor, if you come in, um, they'll get that to you. But that's, that's really the best way, um, to, to go about requesting funds. Um, we have in the past done similar things like we just did, but we're trying to get to the point where we get our groups going to the right place, you have a better opportunity, you can spell out exactly what you need it for, and there's some opportunity for, for even additional funds, and there's a separate board or body that will, that will take those requests under advisement, and then they come in and we do a presentation and give out checks. Now with you guys only being in school part of the year, um, it could be questionable about when the timing is and whether you're at school or not, or in, involved in your program at the time. Um, that's why I think that what we did tonight was appropriate, and it may have to be that way from now on, depending on timing, and I don't know exactly when those QCF grants, uh, applications have to be done, and when exactly, um, we, we, uh, hand out those grants. But it's another option for you. If it falls on an inconvenient time because school's out, well then we would expect to see you back again next year for the same, uh, type of request.
Okay, thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Yep, and we'll look forward to seeing you at the, uh, homecoming. Who, who are we playing?
We're playing Mont Bello.
Mont Bello, and we're gonna win?
Yep.
That's all that matters? That's all that matters? Well, I'll, I'll let my, uh, good friend Michael Hancock know that's where his son, um, I, he might have graduated this last year, but it's where he was attending, so I'm sure he'll be supporting Mont Bello, but we'll do a little mayor-to-mayor wager on the game, all right?
Okay, thank you all so much.
All right, thank you for, for coming in. Um, there's some more comments, yes. I'm not, I'm not trying to forget any of them. All right, Mr. Bullock?
I want to thank you all for showing up and your invitation. Uh, I regretfully have to, um, decline, I will be in Madison, Wisconsin during your whole homecoming week, so, um, can you back it up a week? Okay, no, I know you can't, uh, but, um, I think this will be the first homecoming I've missed since I've been on council and they've been inviting us. But thank you so much for the invitation anyway.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Levine, for bringing the students forward, and ladies in the homecoming committee, appreciate that. Um, I as well will be attending same conferences, Mayor Paul Tim Bullock, but I will send someone in, in to represent me there, and, uh, anything else that you guys need, um, you have our contact, but I appreciate you coming down it, into this forum, in this setting, and, um, being successful in receiving those funds.
All right. Councilman Carson?
I also wanted to thank you for coming tonight and for the invitation. Um, I also will not be able to attend, but I very much appreciate the fact that you came and, uh, with your presentation, so good luck on that football game, uh, there doesn't seem to be any doubt who the winner will be, so, but thank you.
Councilman Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the invitation, I will be there to represent, 'cause I'm an Eagle forever, just so you know. Great work on all the work that you've done in the past few weeks, I know it's been a scramble to, to get all this together, so I just want to commend you and, and your group on everything, and I look forward to seeing you homecoming week.
All right. Uh, Mr. Amador?
So now that we got the, uh, business part out of the way, um, it's an exciting time for, uh, high school homecomings, and hearing the stories that came about with school just starting and the lack of funding that was there, um, enjoy your homecoming years, because you'll look back when you become, um, my age, much older, and you'll say, wow, what a great time that was for Spirit Week and everything else that comes along with that. So, um, the homecoming is October first, um, that is the parade. homecoming is October first. Um, that is the parade. Um, uh, we actually, the council, I'm gonna speak for all of us, or I'm gonna speak for myself at least, uh, regret that the football team is not allowed to ride in the uh, snowplow trucks for the year, this year, uh, due to some exposure and liability. However, um, we're trying to support you the best that we can and know that your community that is grassroots here and everyone else um, takes great pride in that homecoming parade and celebrations because in the past, um, that seemed to go by the wayside. And so it's exciting for me and to see everything that's going on and trying to make that impact for our community. So good luck and go Eagles.
All righty. Thank you all for coming in and, and uh, enjoy your Spirit Week.
On behalf of the student body, we'd just like to thank you guys for all your support, all your help. Um, planning homecoming can be a little stressful sometimes, but it's really nice to know that we have your support. And for those of you who can't make it, um, it's okay. Maybe you can make it to the Powderpuff game or the, um, the other, we're gonna be having activities the entire week. Um, so feel free to come down. We're always there. And even after homecoming, um, we always have stuff going on and the kids are great. So, thank you.
Great, thank you.
And I wanna thank you as well. Uh, it means a lot to have everybody's support.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Have a good night.
You too. All right. Next, I would uh, like to call Angela Brandt. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Angela Brandt. I live at one two one six eight Kittredge Street. I am a resident of the Outlook community. My husband and I have lived in Outlook for eight years and have built our home here. We have two children, daughter Adely, who's turning two next week, and son Avon, who will soon be four. For those who are not aware, Outlook is a community of about seven hundred residents and growing. There are a lot of young children and seventy new homes currently being built. We are located immediately north of one hundred and twentieth Avenue and south of I seventy-six near the four seventy interchange. While our neighborhood is fairly close knit in itself, we've always felt a bit like an outsider to the city. Our snow seems to be removed last, roads repaired last, and we actually write Brighton on our mail as we are in zip code eight oh six oh three. We even have to go extra steps to prove residency to either rec center Brighton or Commerce City. While our family enjoys the small neighborhood park within Outlook, I know our excitement was shared when we first learned of some of the city parks and recreation projects coming our way. When the sign first went up near Chambers and one hundred and sixteenth for a future park, I spoke to my children and even started taking photos of the area to track the development. The restrooms are a big plus. As the dirt was moved and infrastructure laid, a concern shared by our community for some time came back into the spotlight. Outlook residents do not have a safe way to access this new park. Part of the enjoyment of a park is being outdoors and getting exercise together as families. Being forced to drive to the new park defeats this purpose. There are three crossings from Outlook to the other side of one hundred and twentieth Avenue, Laredo, Jasper, and Chambers. None of the three crossings offer sidewalks that go all the way through the intersection or appropriate curb ramps, making it impossible for a wheelchair to cross. One intersection has a stoplight, the Chambers intersection. What the Chambers intersection does not have is a sidewalk going through the intersection, ramp access, there are curbs there currently all the way around, or for the stretch from one hundred and twentieth to one hundred and nineteenth avenues, a sidewalk at all. There is currently a very small, worn by foot path, though I hesitate to even call it a path. As a grown woman, I am fearful of jogging on it due to rocks and roots and the proximity to the heavily traveled Chambers Road. We all know that one hundred and twentieth Avenue has gotten busier by the month and is no longer safe to cross unless at the stoplight at Chambers. Once crossed, though, it is not safe to get to the next street where the sidewalk picks back up. I began having conversations with city staff in June, but have yet to make any real progress. Councilman Diaz joined these discussions recently and I feel understands the urgency in finding an immediate solution to connecting Outlook to the rest of the city. I have watched the coming soon signs and now for sale signs at the undeveloped region of one hundred and twentieth and Chambers for years. I even got excited when markings and flags recently went in the ground, thinking something was being done. Whoa, I'm sorry.
You're all right.
Okay, I'm almost done. Uh, but to no avail. Our community cannot wait a few
You're okay.
More months without access across the intersection, let alone however long a developer would take to actually put a business on the land. We need the city to help now. For the safety of our residents looking to enjoy the new park and other community features, as well as meeting ADA accommodation standards for those in our community who truly have no way to leave our community other than by vehicle without the addition of ramps and sidewalks, the need is now. I thank you for your time this evening and will now be watching for the access point at one hundred and twentieth and Chambers for Outlook residents to safely enjoy what our hard-earned taxpayer money is going toward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council. Um, a few things, ma'am. Uh, I know that on the uh, the seventeen acre parcel uh, adjacent to Chambers and one hundred and twentieth, um, that sidewalk comes around and stops just short of the intersection on the north side. And then uh, it picks up again, like you said, about a block in of the undeveloped property. And normally, the way things would happen is, as those parcels were developed, we would make sure that the public improvements were put in at the time. Now, uh, I'm gonna reach out to staff and say, um, how can we get uh, something done prior to development being done? Because I know, depending on what is slated to go in there, it could change um, how that, where that sidewalk would be and, and different things. So Brian, do you have uh, an opportunity for us to be able to, to figure out a way to, to, to help in a temporary solution to, because I agree. I think Outlook needs access to the rest of the community, just like you said.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Councilman Diaz did raise the concern to us a few weeks back. We've been doing some initial, very preliminary analysis, just to get a rough idea of the funding that would be required to connect the Outlook neighborhood to the new park. Our very preliminary estimates put that somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred thousand dollars. So we're now at the point where we're looking for potential sources of funding for that project. What we'd like to do is bring that back more formally to council with some options and have the city council help us uh, solve the funding challenge. One of the possibilities is uh, contingency funds that were used to build the park. Uh, the challenge is, we're not quite far enough along in closing out the park project to know if we'll have money left over. Uh, so that's one potential source of funding. We're looking at others. And then uh, if council believes that's a, a reasonable course of action, we'll continue with that work and bring it back so that council can make some decisions on how they would like to fund that, that project.
Right. And, and I know um, one hundred and twentieth and Buckley are both designed to be, in the future, to be six lanes. Um, so, you know, we wanna make sure we spend the taxpayers' money in the best manner possible so that we don't have to tear stuff out. So um, if we can get something in there that, that even could offset some of those public improvements for properties adjacent to that, um, we'll have staff look into that and bring back uh, a solution. Now, I have uh, some council members that have requested to speak, so I'll call on them. We'll start, uh, Mr. Amador.
My light, my light was still on from before.
All right, that's fine. Mr. Douglas?
Uh, yes. Uh, thank you. Uh, this has been discussed quite a bit. And uh, as far as your address and all that, if you receive um, the ninety-six gallon totes for trash and recycling, of course, you know you're, you're uh, considered a resident Commerce City. Um, there's, as the Outlook was developed and plotted and deeded, um, uh, we know, we, we talked about this on August twenty-second, of how that whole side of the northern area, one hundred and twentieth, got, it, just parts of, on the other side of one hundred and twentieth and Chambers as well, that are Brighton a, addresses as well, even though it's Commerce City. So um, so things were lost, lost in the shuffle. So that's how you ended up with the Brighton zip code and not the Commerce City zip code. But uh, but I understand, you know, when, when we build new parks, um, when it comes to safe routes to parks, and those things have been discussed, and I think that's, we should be, that should be part of our future uh, projects, uh, maybe with two K dollars is safe routes to parks as well as safe routes to schools, because that is a concern. And I'm sure you guys feel like you're on an island on the other side. So um, we're, we're working really hard to make sure that you guys are connected and that that piece comes together.
All right, Mr. McWherley.
Thanks for coming forward tonight. I know it's uh, it's not always easy to walk up in, in front of this meeting and channel eight and, and convey your needs. Um, not to make you more nervous, sorry. Uh, but I, I appreciate you coming forward with this concern. I um, you know, we've talked in many circumstances around that intersection. Um, I, I've been on council for nine years now and I think the conversation about the confusion between city names, zip codes, whether it's Brighton, Henderson, those parts of our community that fall under the, the Commerce City umbrella but don't look like it on your address, on your envelope, that creates great confusion. And I know it's um, it contributes to, it kinda works against our sense of community building. So it's, A, it's great to hear how strong the community within Outlook is, but um, it's a, it's an example of where we have to look differently at how we build the community. Um, to the mayor's point about who should build these things along the way, uh, if, if things happen sort of in an ideal sense and things develop very quickly, then it makes great sense, right? You have these individual property owners build their piece of a road, build their corner, build their access. But the economy and the ups and downs over the last eight to ten years, really, I think have shown us that we have to think differently about this. And um, we're in the middle of solving for the narrow bridge on Chambers Road down toward King Supers because there again, folks coming from your end of the community have a difficult time getting to the budding retail opportunities that are down at that intersection. You can't bike. We see kids walking. It's not safe. Um, so I think in general, this is a great example of those uh, interconnections we have to think about differently, um, just to hedge our bets against the, the economy doing one thing or the other, or developers taking slower, longer to make something happen. So thank you for um, coming forward. Mr. Douglas touched on another point that I think is important for us, and I would ask the city manager in planning to think about this when we talk about projects, um, and looking at how we solve for pedestrian access. I've actually got a, I've been going through an exercise with a retail development up at one hundred and fourth and Tower, looking at some of the access issues and in particular, some of the ADA concerns. And um, I'm a father of an eleven-year-old who's now found that she likes to bicycle well beyond, you know, a couple blocks away. And the concerns about how she does that without one of us there and literally having to look at what the safe route is where you don't have ramps, you don't have contiguous sidewalks. That same issue exists in many, unfortunately, in too many places in the community. And it's, it's not only in the new parts of town where we have discontinuous development, we also see it in older parts of our community where things have grown up in a haphazard way. So um, I would just ask that as we plan both retail and park and, and municipal amenities, that we look at, to Mr. Douglas's point, the sort of wider scope of, you know, beyond just the immediate project site, but look at what connections need to be considered to make sure that the community has access to that amenity. And I know we've talked also about the villages of Buffalo Run West on the other side of Chambers and the fact that, you know, they too now have to cross this busy Chambers Road to get across and don't have uh, a crosswalk or, or light to control that movement, uh, and make that a safe pedestrian movement. I just, I fear for kids trying to, you know, make their way across and, and it not working to their, uh, you know, working out for them. So um, again, thank you for coming forward tonight, helping um, illustrate the need. And uh, I look forward to hearing back from staff on what our options are for this project.
Thank you very much for coming in this evening. And uh, if you leave your name with um, Mr. McBroom, we'll make sure that uh, you're contacted as to what um, kind of opportunities um, come out of the discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All righty. We'll go to uh, the next person, Deborah Salazar. Good evening.
Uh, my name's Deborah Salazar. My address is one two two one nine Village Circle East in the Alda Community. Um, I have adopted five special needs kids and three kids are in wheelchairs. So it's, so unheard that it's really hard to get them out in the community with, um, with the roads the way they are. And we get like, um, Weld County, um, jury summons. I don't know if it's because our zip code is eight oh six oh three or...
Yeah, I don't know why, because you shouldn't. You should be getting Adams, Adams County um, uh, mail, but...
Yeah, Adams County, we get Weld County mail. We get jury summons from Weld County.
Yeah, and that, that shouldn't be happening. And I, if that happens, I would just contact Weld County and, and let them know that you're not in Weld County. Um, but uh, when it comes to the mail address thing, it's something that we have all tried and continue to work on. We have a federal lobbyist, um, that's, that's working on it for us and has been for a couple of years, um, to try to get our zip codes right so that everybody knows where they live. Um, it was just recently, I was having uh, breakfast in a, in Brighton. I had some gentlemen sitting around the table and they said, oh, you're the mayor of Commerce City. I said, yeah. They said, we live right, right by Commerce City. I said, oh, really? Where, where do you live? Oh, we live in a, a Brighton subdivision called Outlook. And I said, well, that's uh, Commerce City. And they, you know, it took me a while, but after convincing them that they were in Commerce City, I said, you really should uh, look at our website and make sure you're getting service from the city, um, because you're a Commerce City resident.
Yeah, I've lived, lived in Commerce City since I was fourth grade, so...
Great. Well, um, we're gonna do everything we can to uh, to see where, how we can get some sidewalks and some access in there because your kids deserve the opportunity to be able to get out in the community as well.
I just wanna see if there's a way to get more accessible things at the park for the kids?
Um, well, that, Brian, do you wanna talk about how that process works? And, you know, we had a lot of neighborhood meetings and, and involvement in planning that particular park. And right now, we're in the process of building a new rec center, um, which is gonna be fairly close to where you live. Um, and there would be amenities there too. So if you have input that you wanna give, uh, normally you would go to our website. There's uh, um, opportunity to uh, participate in polls on our website about what kind of uh, infrastructure would go in. Um, we also do our uh, um, our, our phone, what do they call that?
Telephone town.
Telephone town halls. And most of the council, if not all, participate in those every time. And we try to do those, I believe it's every other month now.
Yes.
And uh, so if you, if you get on the website, you'll see when the next telephone town hall's coming up. And you can listen to the conversation. There will be opportunity to poll for different amenities. Um, but we do reach out to the community in, in every effort on these parks to make sure um, that everybody has input. Um, so we wanna make sure that your, your input is given as well. And I'm sure Mr. McBroom would gladly give you one of his cards, the same as um, what he did, uh, Angela. And uh, you would be able to contact him and, and with all your concerns. And then um, he'll make sure that that goes into uh, the city manager's report and for this council to be understanding, understanding of the needs within your subdivision. And we, and we will, uh, we greatly appreciate you coming in and talking to us, though. Because if you, if, if you wouldn't have come in, we wouldn't know. And, and so uh, uh, we appreciate that and we'll work towards finding a solution for access, um, for, for the entire Outlook community.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all of the folks that I had on the signup sheet. Is there anyone else in the audience, um, that is here for citizen communication and would like to come forward and speak? Ma'am, over here on the right, would you please come up and state your name and address for the record?
Hi there. I'm Shelley Holland. I live at sixty forty seven East Seventieth Avenue. And I would like to bring some, um, what I feel are very important matters going on in Commerce City. You, as the city council, I'm actually very shocked that none of you know what the heck is going on in your own city. On my end of the town, not on their end of the town, on the old end of town, we have a lot of issues going on. I was in touch with, um, I'm sorry, can't remember his name. Um, Patrick, I think is what his name is, part of the city, um, planning and environmental stuff. Anyway, I talked to him about one of the trailer courts up on Highway two and sixty-ninth. I said, I have been a resident in Commerce City my entire life. My dad was on the fire department with Rick Teeter. I've been a medical assistant to a couple of you. I've gone to school with a couple of you. So for all of you to be citizens of this city for your entire life, I'm shocked that you don't recognize what's going on. So I got an, an email back from him that stated that this trailer court on sixty-ninth and Highway two, of which they're supposed to view twice a year, it is September. They have not been there yet this year. So eleven citations have gone out, pot growing out in the background, chickens and ducks, chi, um, roosters crowing morning, noon, and night. I have drug deals going on on my corner of my street at Seventieth and Jasmine all the time. on my corner of my street at 70th and Jasmine all the time. The motel that's right behind my house, constantly, cars parking on my street, going back there, doing their drug deals, coming back over in the morning, getting in their cars, driving away. I don't understand, and I want some answers. And that's why I'm here, because I have a mouth and I want to know what the hell's going on in my city.
Well, all I can say is have you reached out and called the police when these...
I've called the police numerous times. They should have me on a first-name basis. I have the non-emergency number.
Okay.
Yes.
And have you gotten any response from the police?
Not very well response, no. All I keep getting told is, "Call the number, call the number." And then I get attitude from the dispatchers when I call in. So I can either call 911 and make that a waste of time, or I can call the non-emergency number when it's not as important as they think it is, and then nobody shows up. So I'm a little concerned about what's going on on my side of Commerce City.
Well, this has been my side of Commerce City my whole life.
Right. The whole time I've been here tonight, it's all been about Buffalo Run, River Run, everything up that way. And I'm really tired of hearing about that. I want to know what we're doing about this side of town.
All right. Well, you did see us doing something about Adam City.
I know that Adam City right now is full of bedbugs. That's all I know about that Adam City.
I would tell you that Adam City has its own problems, but you did see us sitting here supporting Adam City.
I did, which I will give you kudos to that, which...
So here's what I would say to any resident in our community. If you have problems that are going on, we need to know about them so that...
That's why I'm here.
So we can address them. So thank you for coming in. All right, we have, all the administrative folks are right here. So we have the chief of police that's standing in the back. And when we're done and you're ready to leave...
Yep.
I want you to go back and talk to Lowell...
Yep.
Because I want him to take the lead on making sure that all of your current concerns are addressed.
Yep.
That's what we want. And if they're not addressed, we want you to contact us, whether that is call me, or whether it's come back into another council meeting, whatever you feel you need to do. But we want to make sure that your concerns are taken care of. So the roosters, the things that are illegal in our city, Lowell needs to know about them, or Chief Richardson needs to know about them. So we can look into them. And the chief can have follow-up with this council to assure us that they've had, they've been in your area and looked at the issues and taken care of them. So that's what I would, I would say that whether you lived up north or down here, we want every resident to be treated the same. We want to make sure if there's problems in your neighborhood, that we address them. And so I would ask, is there any council members, it looks like there are a few, that have a comment? And then I would ask that you go back and talk to the chief.
I'd be happy to.
And he's standing right back there. Mr. McAdonnie, do you have something?
I would. I just want to add, there are four of us that sit here in an at-large capacity. So we are elected and here to represent the entire community regardless of where we live.
Right.
I think the mayor touched on a couple of key points. I just want to remind you and all the folks that might be watching, if you have tried to go through proper channels and find or feel that you're not getting the traction that you need or a recognition of the concern that you think is appropriate, all of our contact info as individuals is on that city website. Send us an email, give us a phone call, explain what you've done, where things are not playing out as you think they should be so that we can understand that issue. We can take that and then work directly with city staff offline. We don't have to see it come to this point. I think the one thing I want to reiterate is, I always get frustrated when you're frustrated. So if you come to a meeting like tonight and it's obvious that you've been battling this for some time and it's building up...
Mm-hmm.
We need to know about it before you reach that point.
Yep.
Please help us, help you by reaching out to us before you cross that line. Your quality of life, everyone's quality of life is important to us. So, but if we don't know, we can't help and advocate. So I think it's incredibly important, especially if you've been trying to reach out and you just feel like you're not getting traction.
I'm getting nowhere.
Yeah, then any one of us are ready to receive that phone call or that email. You've got all of us here tonight.
Yep.
I know that staff hears you and you're going to have some conversations tonight, but just for future reference, please don't hesitate to reach out to us in advance. I think all of us, even though we get lots of communication, I'm always shocked at how little outreach we get. And then you find out through, you know, somebody you happen to talk to or, you know, word of mouth that somebody's been dealing with an issue for a long time and they haven't gotten it solved, but we haven't heard about it to help advocate. So I just...
That's why I came here tonight.
Yes, and I am glad you have. So I'm eager to see what we can do from here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Amador.
Thank you, Shelley, Ms. Holland. I appreciate, you touched on a gamut of issues here. And what I can tell you is that the 69th and Highway Two trailer park issues that are going on, that are there, there were some communications from myself to staff to look into that. So I have the same concerns as you have, especially across the street from a school, CLA.
Right.
So I am fully aware. As far as the 11 citations that you spoke about, I guess I can't speak to that in its entirety, but I'll have to direct that to staff to see what that really looks like.
Yeah, I got the email regarding the 11 citations. And now that there's also been 12 gas leaks in three months over there. So a little scary when I'm right around the corner from that.
Okay. And then as far as the, I'm going to call it an epidemic of drug deals or things that are happening in the core city, I've been pretty vocal in my one-on-ones with the city manager about a couple of the areas within the city. And one of them identified is definitely 70th and Jasmine.
Yep.
So another community member actually outreach to me, and we've had a pretty good conversation about that. So what I can tell you is those kinds of things are not immediate, and they take, I'm going to call it, some covert police work to make sure that things are getting cured, and they're not always immediate. So, you know, I'm not sure if you're watching the news, there is a summit on opiate addiction and things that are going on within the whole state of Colorado.
I work in the field.
Denver's dealing with as well. And so with, there are some challenges there. So the items are being addressed. And then as far as, I think you did talk about roosters and chickens, there is ordinance against chickens and roosters in the city. And so if there are roosters, and I know Councilman Teeter has roosters, or had a rooster in his immediate area that greeted him at the driveway one day, we are aware. But a lot of times, we don't know that they're out there until residents come in and talk to us. And so to echo what Jason said, we don't like these things to get to the boiling point, and it seems like you're there.
I'm past there.
So...
Past there.
I would say, as Ward One, I am here and I do return every phone call that I do get. It might not be that day, but I do get to it within a couple of days, so.
I was told it would be a waste of my time to do the email on there. And actually, I got surprised because I did get responses rather quickly. And I'm sorry, his name is just blanking on me right now, but he's been in touch with me quite a few times with this matter. And I did let him know I was going to come address you guys with it because I just feel like it's that strong of a matter to me that from Conoco on Highway Two, basically all the way up to Quebec is a mess, and it needs help.
Very good. Well, thank you for coming in and expressing your concerns tonight.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming in, Shelley. And I have to apologize, and I feel bad that you've come to this point, or it's come to this point. You know that you can always reach out to me. You've known me for many years on a personal level as well. So again, to Jason's point, I wasn't aware of all of that activity. I do know that I had some citizen concerns about six months ago about the trailer park there on 69th. And that was something that city manager and I had discussed, reviewing. It was a matter of dilapidated trailers that were brought in and out of the park.
They looked like they sat in a flood.
Right. And so that has been addressed, but I think that's probably something that we could circle back and maybe do a follow-up on. But just know that you can reach me anytime, email or phone call. All right?
All right, Shelley.
Thank you.
We really appreciate you coming in. If you have concerns, please call us. Chief Richardson will address you in the back and hopefully start taking care of some of your concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience that was here to speak at citizen communication that did not get the opportunity to sign up? Seeing none, we'll move forward with our agenda. We're moving into the approval of the minutes portion of the agenda. We have the July 18th, 2016 minutes. I'm open for a motion to approve those minutes. Councilman McAdonnie.
Do we need to excuse Councilman Amador in this, or did he show up later?
Not on that one.
Oh, then I would move to approve the minutes of July 18.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the July 18th, 2016 minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now we have the September 12th, 2016 minutes. I'm open for a motion and a second to allow Councilmember Amador to abstain from voting on these minutes because of his excused absence. Mr. Teeter.
Move to allow Councilman Amador to be excused on September 12th.
Thank you. Mr. McAdonnie.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to allow for that abstention. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion to approve the minutes of September 12th, 2016. Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve the September 12th, 2016 special meeting minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes of September 12th, 2016. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. And we'll move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to a council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove specific items for further discussion and/or a separate vote. Tonight, there are eight items listed under the consent agenda. Does any one on council wish to remove an item off of the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none.
None.
Oh, I got a lot of lights lit up. I need someone to go, "I want to move something off." All right. Andrea?
Uh, resolution 2016-104, the master services agreement for engineering services.
Hold on one second. Tell me again the number.
2016-104.
2016-104, and that's on the engineering services? Okay. Is there any others? Seeing none. We're pulling, we're pulling the 2116-104 off, and that leaves us with seven consent agenda items. Will the city attorney please read the titles of those items?
Yes. If you would like to obtain a motion to approve the consent agenda before...
Prior to you reading them?
Sure.
That's fine. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes.
Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
As amended.
As amended.
Mr. McAdonnie.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda as amended. Now I'll ask for those titles, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance Z93716, an ordinance rezoning from Ag to I-1, the property described in Exhibit A, attached Tier Two and made a part hereof, located at 6601 Colorado Boulevard, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the city of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said rezoning. Ordinance 2110, an ordinance amending the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code to license and regulate mobile ice cream vendors. Ordinance 2112, an ordinance amending the 2016 budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado by increasing the budgeted revenues in the general fund by $2,553,900 for the recognition of the payment from Adams County as the administrator of the IGA for the Adams County Airport Committee, authorizing the transfer of $1,398,021 to the CIPP Fund and authorizing the expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2113, an ordinance amending the 2016 budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado by appropriating a portion of the unencumbered fund balance of the general fund in the amount of $586,000, and transferring a portion of the unencumbered fund balance in the general fund to the following: CIPP Fund in the amount of $588,000, URA Fund in the amount of $100,000, transferring $40,000 from the CIPP Fund to the GID Fund, appropriating a portion of the unencumbered fund balance in the Police Donation Fund in the amount of $46,704.42 for a total amount of $1,360,704.42, and reaffirming prior appropriations and authorizing the expenditure thereof. Resolution 2016-88, resolution approving intergovernmental agreement regarding Highway Two improvements with South Adams County Water and Sanitation District. Resolution 2016-105, resolution approving city attorney employment contract. Resolution 2016-107, resolution approving adjustment to city manager compensation.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Titles have been read. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, the consent agenda has been approved unanimously this evening. All right, now we have one item that we pulled off the consent agenda that we'll take up at this time. It's Resolution 2116-104. It is agreement, let me see here, it's the resolution approving amendment to the master services agreement for engineering services. Mr. Amador, you want to tell us why you pulled that item?
I had two questions. And when I was reading the legislation text, it says, "An amendment to the existing master services agreement with this vendor, Atkins." What was the amount of the master services agreement? I really have two questions. And so I guess my question is, is it, the financial impact is $363,000, is kind of the first question. Was that something? And I don't recall if it was a large amount or a small amount that the master services agreement or how that came down. If you could remind me, please?
Yes. So we started out with, I believe, it was $150,000. That was amended up to with an additional $80,000. So we were still below the $250,000 threshold, and this would now place it above that. So the 230 plus the 300,000.
Very good. So that falls, I think, aligns with the procurement policy. And then another piece of this says, "Due to staff shortages..." And I had a brief conversation with our city attorney before the meeting about what that staff shortages look like. And I know we just went through the budget appropriation, and maybe I'll give you kind of what his general response was, that we've got a couple of new staff members that are either onboarding or soon to be onboarding possibly. Could you just allude to maybe what staff shortages kind of looks like?
Certainly. Yes, within our engineering division, we have 10 positions, including the city engineer. Six of those 10 are currently vacant. So we just brought on a new person last Monday.
Okay.
Another one is going to start next Monday. So the services with, yet all the continued demands of development review, traffic requests, drainage requests, all those things still continue to come on, moving all of our CIP projects forward. So the intent through our services agreement with Atkins is to continue that day-to-day work of all those different requests as they come in and provide that service back to the community. So this is intended, it's a time and materials basis. So if we don't spend it all, we'll see how we can ramp up. It is a very difficult time to be hiring engineers in this market right now. And so we've struggled definitely to get people on board. And instead, so this is meant to just cover us so that we can continue those daily services.
Thank you, Ms. DeAndrea, for the clarifications. And I will have to agree with you in finding, A, qualified staff, and B, even with the way that the market is, even if you had a full staff, it's still a challenge to get all of the requirements that we need as a city to make the schedules that we are hitting. And so I did want to just kind of flag that to make sure that we were good in our procurement policy, but also understanding the challenges with the market, the level of service that we're trying to provide to, that we are providing to the residents, and fulfilling our obligations that we have. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McAdonnie.
Thanks for that update, Ms. DeAndrea. Just to kind of build on the questions from Councilman Amador, I guess the thought I have, given the market conditions in terms of available skilled employees, is this to me was framed as sort of a for-now approach. But I think we've seen ebbs and flows in the ability to keep some of these positions... But I think we've seen ebbs and flows in the ability to keep some of these positions staffed for a while. And I know, you know, in, in a range of industries, it's, it makes sense, given, again, peak and, you know, valley of market timing and demand, to look at these fee-for-service type agreements where we can sort of right-size our employee side of the equation and balance the equation with, uh, contract services. So, does it, does it make sense? And I don't, I, I think we touched on this very briefly in the budget retreat, but what's our strategy in terms of long-term? Is it to try and fill all those positions with employee function, uh, employees in those functions? Or does it make sense to find some split where we have an ongoing contract side of the equation to allow for the sort of right sizing of, you know, what we're putting into salary? And, and I, you know, I always, you know, from personal experience, I hate to see sort of overstaffing in an area to accommodate, you know, a, a need for a period of time, and all of a sudden you have to sever a relationship with somebody who's an employee. It's another thing to sever a relationship with a vendor or, you know, only pay for the services that you've needed to, you know, obtain from that vendor. Does that make sense?
Absolutely, and I think that's an excellent question, um, and one that we struggle with in, especially in a, a robust economy like we are now. We have so much building going on, um, so much development review coming in the door. And so I think, to answer your question specifically, we, we are planning to hire all of these positions. And yet I still see that there would be a need to retain, whether it's through, um, Atkins or another firm, uh, some sort of general engineering services, even for very specialized things. So even if we had all that expertise, um, as much as I love to do all of it, or try and think that I can do all of it, um, sometimes for drainage reports or specific questions, we still need to, to send that out to somebody who has a much higher level of expertise than we might retain in-house. And so we do want to maintain some sort of relationship, and so that, hopefully, we're trying to get that right as, as what is that amount that we need to outsource, if you will, while still, um, building and developing at least some base capability within, within our existing staff.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I had a question about Atkins. Now, this is the aggregate amount not to exceed six hundred and ninety-three thousand, correct?
Correct.
And, um, when did this commence, as far as when did it start? Is this, when we do this contract, is it just for this upcoming year, for two thousand seventeen?
Yes, that is for the twenty seventeen amount.
Okay.
Correct.
Um, question I had, I know earlier, last year-
Or, excuse me, twenty sixteen, sorry.
Okay. Um, Atkins had done an engineering report over in Chambers, correct? And they gave us what they thought would close to be, what it cost for those three different projects. Um, but then the projects were bidded out, and they were much higher than what they anticipated. Um, s- so, uh, knowing that, um, and then going forward, uh, is there any, um, option as far as going out and seeking a, a new bid with a different engineering company? Uh, because that just kind of rubbed me the wrong way. I mean, when I saw those, and it was like a really good study because it showed in detail everything that was supposed to be done, but then when the bid was put out, it was just, it wasn't even close.
Yeah, I, I, um, I think we, we, they were shocked as well by the prices. I think that speaks more to the volatility of the market-
Okay.
-than it does to their engineering expertise in that particular situation. They were going off the, um, C dot bid book, which we use a lot for our unit prices, and it just has, for three times, it came in very, very high.
Right.
So, um, we are planning for next year to go out and seek new proposals for engineering services. Um, I think just given the situation where, where we're so low on staff, that was what the, just why we made the decision to continue with Atkins and get us through this period until we can staff back up. But our intent, um, because the MSA, I think, does expire after this year, we would go out for new proposals in twenty seventeen.
Alright, thank you for, for that explanation.
Saying none. Thank you, Ms. DeAndrea. Alright, um, I'm open for a motion. Did you have discussion, Jay? I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve resolution twenty sixteen dash one oh four.
Mr. McLeodon?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty-one sixteen dash one oh four. Would you please read the title?
Resolution twenty sixteen one oh four, resolution approving amendment to master services agreement for engineering services.
Thank you. Have a motion and second. Title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now we'll move into our public hearing portion of the meeting. We have resolution twenty sixteen dash ninety-four. Um, uh, I'm asking for a motion and a second to continue this matter until a further date to be determined. Mr. McLeodon?
So moved.
Mr. Douglas?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to continue resolution twenty sixteen dash ninety-four, um, to a future date, uh, to be determined. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next, we have resolution twenty sixteen dash ninety-five. Um, I'm, on this one, it, it's tied to the same development. I'm asking for a motion and a second to continue the matter until a further date to be determined. Mr. Amador?
Move to continue resolution twenty sixteen dash ninety-five?
Thank you. Mr. McLeodon?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to, to continue resolution twenty sixteen dash ninety-five, um, to a further date to be determined. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next, we, uh, move into resolution twenty sixteen dash ninety-five slash AN dash two-three-seven dash sixteen. Resolution twenty sixteen dash eighty-five slash AN two-thirty-eight dash sixteen, and Z dash nine-three-four dash sixteen. The next five items are interrelated and will be heard under one public hearing, but voted on separately. I'm going to open the public hearing and invite Planner Paul Workman forward and ask the city attorney to proceed with the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Um, good evening, Mr. Workman. Can you please state your name and position?
Yes, my name is Paul Workman. I'm a city planner with the City of Commerce City.
And are you familiar with the annexation cases, uh, AN two-three-eight dash sixteen and AN two-three-seven dash sixteen?
Yes, I am.
Um, so I'm going to ask you a series of questions about both of those cases, uh, at the same time.
Okay.
Um, has the city council adopted a plan for the areas proposed to be annexed pursuant to CRS thirty-one dash twelve dash one oh five one E?
Yes, they have.
Is at least one-sixth of the perimeter of each of the areas proposed to be annexed contiguous with the existing boundaries of the City of Commerce City?
Yes.
Does a community of interest exist between the areas proposed to be annexed and the City of Commerce City?
Yes.
Are the areas proposed to be annexed or urbanized, I'm sorry. Are the areas proposed to be annexed urbanized, or will they be urbanized in the near future?
Yes.
Are the areas proposed to be annexed integrated or capable of being integrated with the City of Commerce City?
Yes.
Have all of the owners of the lands to be annexed signed the petitions for annexation?
Yes, they have.
Have annexation proceedings been effectively commenced for the annexation of any of the land proposed to be annexed to any other municipality?
No.
Would the proposed annexations result in detachment of area from any school district and attachment of the same to another school district?
No.
Did the annexation petitions for each annexation meet the requirements of law?
They do.
Will the proposed annexations have the effect of extending any boundary of the City of Commerce City more than three miles in any direction from any point of such boundary in any one year?
No.
Is the entire width of any street or alley in the areas proposed to be annexed included within the annexations?
Yes.
Have all requirements of CRS thirty-one dash twelve dash one oh four, thirty-one dash twelve dash one oh five, and section thirty of Article Two of the State Constitution been satisfied with respect to these annexations?
They have.
Thank you, Mr. Workman.
Thank you.
Proceed with your case.
Alright. Is there one, anyone in the audience who would like to offer testimony to this matter?
Mr. Mayor, I believe Mr. Workman may have more-
Oh, alright.
...items to present.
It's a very, very short presentation.
Go ahead and continue, Mr. Workman.
Alright. Um, first of all, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. Uh, as Mr. Cheesely alluded to, there are, uh, three separate cases being heard, uh, this evening, but one presentation. Uh, those three cases are annexation two-thirty-seven dash sixteen, annexation dash two-thirty-eight dash sixteen, and the zoning of those properties in case Z dash nine-thirty-four dash sixteen. Subject property is generally referred to as the Second Creek Park Site. The City of Commerce City is the applicant as we own the property, and again, the request is to annex and zone. Subject property, uh, is located generally north of one hundred and twelfth Avenue, west of the O'Brien Canal, kind of south of the Burlington Northern Railroad and I seventy-six. Um, the area that is the subject of annexation two-thirty-seven is the southern parcel, and the area that is the subject of annexation two-thirty-eight is the northern parcel. For additional context and reference, the city's future, uh, Northern Range Recreation Center site is located just to the west of this site. The city's future land use plan for the subject property calls it out as future park space. And this is an aerial of the subject property showing that it is currently undeveloped. Again, the request this evening is to annex and zone property, um, uh, to the city's, uh, public zoning designation. Uh, in the future, there is plans to make this into a future public park. Uh, by having it annexed and zoned, it will further streamline, uh, the future development, um, at that, of the park at that time, although again, there is no proposal, uh, for development currently. Um, the planning commission does not review annexation cases. Uh, in this case, the development review team is making the recommendation for approval for the annexations. Essentially, both applications, uh, comply with the state law. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's within our municipal services area. Uh, it, the property will be developed in the future as a public park. When the site is developed, it will be constructed with the adequate capacity, and the annexation will help integrate the future properties into the city. So the planning commission does evaluate, um, zoning requests when they're associated with the annexation. Uh, the zoning approval criteria for annexation are slightly different than what a normal or traditional rezoning would entail. Uh, the land development code requires that one of the three findings on the slide, uh, shown, be, uh, be found, uh, in order to approve the annexation zoning. In this particular case, the annexation zoning, uh, meets the intent of the first criteria there, that the requested zoning to the city's public designation is the most compatible with the future land use designation for the property as a public park. At this time, staff has received two requests for additional information. Uh, there was no indication of support or opposition, just, uh, more curiosity about what the request was for. So with that, the, uh, development review team is recommending that the city council vote to approve the annexation requests, as well as the planning commission took a vote on May third of twenty sixteen and voted unanimously five nothing to recommend approval to the city council for the requested annexation zoning. And that would conclude staff's presentation this evening. However, we are certainly available for any questions you all might have.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions of staff at this time? Mr. McLeodon? It's from before. Mr. Douglas?
Oh, you had a question. When this, when this annex, indeed it, it's going to have a Commerce City address that won't have a zip code and all that, will be Commerce City.
Sorry. At this time, there's been no address assigned to it. When the development occurs, the address will be assigned, and at that time, it will be addressed in accordance with the appropriate processes and procedures at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, my, from my understanding, those businesses, uh, that are, that are right there on the corner, um, are Brighton. Um, Brighton, uh, address, but they're within Commerce City.
Right.
So I'm assuming it will be a Commerce, or, or a Brighton address, um, until we get logistics worked out with Washington DC and, and how the US Post Office, uh, designates zip codes and where, where the mail comes out of what post office. Um, I think that's, that's the bigger issue, is, is dealing with that through all, for all the parts of our community. But I don't, my opinion is, Steve, that, uh, it will have to have the address of the area of which post office is serving that. Okay? Any other questions? Uh, Mr. Mac, oh, Mr. McLeodon, yeah, no, you're up. Waiting for a motion, alright. Saying no more, no more questions. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify on this matter? Saying no one. I'm going to close the public hearing. And I'm open for that motion, Mr. McLeodon, um, to approve resolution twenty sixteen dash ninety-five.
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty sixteen dash ninety-five. Will the city attorney please read that title?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Yeah.
Sorry.
Sorry, so I'll just clarify my motion.
Yes, please.
I'm moving to approve resolution twenty sixteen dash eighty-four.
Alright, I have a typo.
And this is the, uh, resolution making findings of fact by the city council regarding the annexation we just heard, um, location we just heard about for Mr. Workman.
Okay, and the, uh, second, Mr. Douglas, you're good with that?
Second, yes.
Now I have a motion and a second. Title's correct?
Yes, resolution twenty sixteen dash eighty-four, resolution making findings of fact by the city council.
Yeah, my, my paperwork-
Yeah, no, I apologize, there's an error in the script.
It's fine, thank you.
Uh-
Alright, so we have a motion and a second. Title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying-
I could-
He did read the title. You want to read it again?
I'll read it.
Go ahead and read it.
Resolution twenty sixteen eighty-four, resolution making findings of fact by the city council of the City of Commerce City and its conclusion relative to eligibility of annexation to the City of Commerce City of the property with PIN one-seven-two-three-zero-six-zero-zero-zero-one-three, Commerce City, Colorado, in AN two-three-seven dash sixteen.
Thank you. Now the title's been read. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now we'll move on to the next one. I'm open for a motion to introduce ordinance AN dash two-three-seven dash sixteen by council as seated. Mr. Bullock?
Move to introduce AN dash two-three-seven dash sixteen.
Thank you. Mr. McLeodon?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read that title?
AN two-three-seven sixteen, an ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory described in Exhibit A exact, attached heretofore and made a part hereof located north of East one-hundred-and-twelfth Avenue, west of the O'Brien Canal, south of the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad, and east of Highway Two, PIN one-seven-two-three-zero-six-zero-zero-zero-one-three, Commerce City, Colorado.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Title's been read. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, uh, the ordinances, annexation ordinances, uh, approved unanimously this evening by council. Next item is, uh, I need a motion, uh, for resolution twenty sixteen dash eighty-five. Go to, uh, Mr. McLeodon.
Move to approve resolution twenty sixteen dash eighty-five.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read that title?
Resolution twenty sixteen eighty-five, resolution making findings of fact by the city council of the City of Commerce City and its conclusion relative to the eligibility of annexation to the City of Commerce City of the property with PIN one-seven-two-three-zero-six-two-zero-zero-zero-one, Commerce City, Colorado, in AN two-three-eight-one-six.
Thank you. Alright, uh, motion and a second for resolution twenty sixteen dash eighty-five. And the, uh, the title has been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, we're to, uh, the introduction of ordinance AN dash two-three-eight dash sixteen by council as seated. Mr. Bullock?
Move to introduce AN two-three-eight day sixteen, ca- on first reading, council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. McLeodon?
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read that title?
AN two-three-eight sixteen, an ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory described in Exhibit A attached heretofore and made a part hereof located southeast of the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad and the Interstate seventy-six alignment, PIN one-seven-two-three-zero-six-two-zero-zero-zero-one, Commerce City, Colorado.
Thank you. We'll motion a second. Title's been read. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, that, uh, annexation ordinance has been introduced unanimously by the city council. Now, I'm open for a motion to accept the findings and recommendations of the planning commission on case Z nine-three-four dash sixteen. Mr. McLeodon?
So moved.
Mr. Amador?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the findings and, and recommendations of the planning commission on case Z nine-three-four dash sixteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion to introduce ordinance Z nine-three-four dash sixteen by council as seated. Mr. Bullock?
Move to- Move to introduce ordinance Z nine three four day sixteen, on first reading, council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. McAdonie?
Second.
All right, I have a motion, the second, for that introduction. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance Z nine three four sixteen, an ordinance rezoning from Adams County A three to Commerce City Public. The property described in Exhibit A attached hereto and made a part hereof, located north of East one hundred twelfth Avenue, south of the Burlington Northern and Santa Fe Railroad right away, west of the O'Brien Canal and east of Highway two, PIN one seven two three zero six zero 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 one three and one seven two three zero six two zero 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 one, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the city of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said rezoning.
Ask for a roll call vote. Ordinance Z nine three four dash one six is introduced unanimously by council this evening. Now, we move into ordinances on first reading. We have ordinance twenty one oh eight. Is anyone in the audience here that would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing no one. I'm open for a motion, the second, to introduce ordinance twenty one oh eight. Council is seated. Mr. McAdonie?
I'm prepared to make the motion, but I had a comment for the city attorney. The title of this ordinance reads, in paraphrasing here, Land Development Code relating to public parks and recreation fees. It seems like it's missing the word impact. This is not park and recreation fees in form of what we pay to leverage a facility, but rather the impact fee. And I think it's a, an official designation that we've referred to that fee as an impact fee.
That is correct. I want to make sure that the, the section of the Land Development Code, I believe, refers to, is in a section entitled Impact or Development Fees.
Okay.
And the title of this section that is being amended is Public Park and Recreation Fees. So it, but in, in its entirety deals solely with impact fees. It is in the whole, related to impacts from development.
Structurally, it's in the impact fees, and it's that, okay. So we don't need to retitle this, given that feedback?
No, it will not address user fees.
Great. Then, with that said, I would move to introduce ordinance twenty one oh eight on first reading. Council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. To introduce ordinance twenty one oh eight, will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance two one zero eight, an ordinance amending section twenty one dash nine two one zero of the Commerce City Land Development Code relating to public parks and recreation fees.
Thank you. I, I'm open for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance twenty one oh eight is introduced unanimously by the city council this evening. And we'll move to ordinance twenty one fifteen. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing no one. I'm open for a motion to introduce ordinance twenty one fifteen by council as seated. Mr. McAdonie?
Move to introduce ordinance twenty one fifteen on first reading. Council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the introduction of ordinance twenty one fifteen. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance twenty one fifteen, an ordinance amending the twenty sixteen budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Department of Justice JAG burn grant funds in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars for the purchase of tasers to be used by police department personnel and authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance twenty one fifteen is introduced unanimously by the city council this evening. We'll move on to administrative business. Council, have any administrative business this evening? Seeing none. We'll move into reports. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did distribute via email this week's edition of the city manager update. This week's updates include an update on an issue raised by a resident through Councilman Douglas about pedestrian signals on one hundred and fourth Avenue. So I would call your attention to that update. We also have an update alerting council and the community to the closure of one hundred twelfth Avenue and Potomac Street, which will occur soon to facilitate the improvement of both of those roads and the extension of infrastructure for our new recreation center. We also have included a construction update from Public Works. It's a schedule update on some pavement management projects and some additional road improvements that are scheduled for this fall. And then we've attached the capital improvement program update and our typical look ahead to the city council work schedule. As always, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have about those updates.
I have one. Mr. McBroom, Peoria Street. I know it's been a struggle. It's been now over two and a half months, going on three months. I know, you know, last time I checked, we were going to have this work done last week, be open this week. I see that it was moved. Construction starting Wednesday, ending Friday, having Peoria Street back open over the, for the weekend. I just want to make sure that it doesn't continue to move, move out farther. Our residents in that neighborhood are starting to get very frustrated. And if I, if I would have known it was going to take this long, I would have pushed a little harder for plates on the road. So we're, we're positive that they're going to be able to get in there and get this work done?
That's the current schedule. Should begin this week and be done end of this week.
All right. And I bring that up because I know there's probably a lot of residents sitting by, watching, because every time we've told them something, it's changed. And I just want to make sure that we stay on schedule. I would move to Mr. Sheasley for a, a report from the city attorney.
Just to note that in the next couple of weeks, you'll receive a report on the quarterly activity of the city attorney's office, including a litigation update. So if there are any specific questions on that, please reach out to me. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And congratulations on being appointed city attorney.
And thank you very much again. I am very grateful and excited. Thank you.
Great, thanks. I'll move into my report. I know it's been a while since we've had a meeting because of holidays. We had Rotary, had the Brighton Chamber of Commerce Business Event at L. Hardens. I know several of the council members attended that. I had a luncheon with Mayor Hancock and the Metro Denver Chamber of Commerce for the International Advisory Council that I serve on. We had LG Everest, a business in Commerce City over off Eighty-Eighth Avenue. It was their hundred and, hundred and fortieth celebration. To be in business that long is, is really telling of a business. We had the Rotary picnic, thanks to the president, Mr. Bullock. We had the annual South Adams Spaghetti Dinner, which several of us attended. And thank you and congratulations to the fire department. We had the employee appreciation lunch. Unfortunately, it was rained out, and there's another one scheduled that's coming up. We had the Rotary again. We had the meeting. I had myself and Mr. McBroom, administrators from the county, as well as Commissioner Orrecio. We had a discussion on a joint URA opportunity with Adams County. And then Adams County Fair and VIP reception. There were several of us that went to that as well, and thank you to the county for that. I know several people went, several council members went to the elementary, the Turnberry Elementary Trot-a-thon. I did drive over, was gonna, gonna stop and go over and run a lap with the kids. Unfortunately, there's a parking problem around that school, especially when there's that much going on. There wasn't, there wasn't parking. I would, I would have run five blocks to get to, go around one lap around the thing. So unfortunately, that didn't happen. I did attend the Alsup Elementary National Hispanic Heritage Month Celebration that Alsup Elementary had. It was, it was a great event. I was glad to have the opportunity to get up and speak. I was somewhat frustrated that there was, there was no school board members, no superintendent, and I was the only, the only person that showed up on the agenda to speak. So that was a little frustrating. But however, they did have a great event, and I want to thank me pueblo again for donating all of the refreshments for, for their event. The Harvest Moon Dinner and Silent Auction out at the Refuge Visitor Center. Were several of us that attended that. That was well-attended. And thank you to, to all of the members that showed up to that. I want to go back just a little bit because we did have such a, a distance between meetings and mention a few key items. Council Budget Retreat. I want to thank the staff and the city council. The budget retreat went well. All the staff came fully prepared to answer all of our questions. And I'm glad that the city's in the condition that it's in, and it's due to the staff and council that we have. We had, let's see. We had, we did have an ACC meeting. We have another one coming up next week, maybe later, and I'm sorry, Friday this week. But we started having these ACC meetings again for the council benefit of knowing what's going on. Yes, 1A did pass, all the, everything's moving forward. However, we're looking at how we engage in our agreement with Denver to pursue the marketing concept of the ACC agreement. We also had Alpine Auto Works and Customs Ribbon Cutting. Several of the council members were there. And myself and Mr. Teeter attended the NADA Board Meeting, and that's the report that I came back and gave you about RTT, RTD, and its funding moving forward. I'm open if anybody would like to add anything to my report. Mr. McAdonie, do you have anything? Go right ahead.
Just regarding your comments around the trot at Turnberry. You know, the design of that site and the road impact when schools in session and events are underway is the exact same problem that's been in place at Second Creek since its inception. We have a third elementary school in that part of town, obviously the fourth district elementary school in addition to Timig. But this fourth elementary school that'll be sited over in the, just south of one hundred and twelfth in reunion, we had the risk of the same issue being present at that new site. It's my understanding and talking to Terry Lucero with the district that there, there has been some adjustment in the road width for the, for the similar sort of curve around that school. You know, having had a child attend five years at Second Creek, I've had more years to obsess about that specific stretch of road than, than many others. Thinking about the stress of parents trying to race into back-to-school nights or school events or pick up or attend field day or whatever, you, you just can't get through. And then you've got parents or community members trying to get through, and they develop a sense of animosity for the school because of the traffic issues. I think these are probably the least, the most poorly considered development plans I can think of. And I would ask, similar to our comments earlier in the evening about how we plan for access, I can't think of another school site where it's as buried in the community. I know that the concept is novel, right? It's, school should be the sort of center of a community. The problem is, it's in the center of the community. And in Frontera, as an example, we have very, very limited north, south, east, west access. So you concentrate, hyper-concentrate the traffic coming into that school site from only a couple of directions. Parking on a radius is not easy. Most people I know are horrible parallel parkers. In fact, we have an entire shift in the automotive industry to help people park for themselves, right, with cars that will self-park. I'm pretty sure those self-parking cars don't come with a design modification to park on a radius. So when you try and have people parallel park and do so on a radius, it's incredibly difficult. The planning on these locations was so poor that we've now had to have homeowners in the Second Creek school site sacrifice parking in front of their own homes in order to create a safer corridor for cars. The, my understanding is Public Works is in the middle of neighborhood conversations with Turnberry to have those neighbors make the very same sacrifice. I, I've been thinking about this a lot, and I'm glad you brought it up. I think we have to look much more aggressively at the problem of Second Creek and Turnberry and consider what we need to do at the city's expense to potentially widen that road to create a parking corridor. Obviously, the school sites are limited, and you don't want to impact the critical use space, but I don't know if we need to look at doing a little, you know, cut-in with a parking radius so, to help make it more move, more, you know, easier to move. I think the challenge is balancing some of those planning concepts that I've come to understand, you know, look at Stapleton. Stapleton in general has been designed with narrower streets with the intent of slowing vehicles down. I get that in a straight line, but I think that same sort of philosophy when applied to a curve around a school where kids are likely to jump across the street or out between cars, or moms trying to load an infant, and, you know, cars coming around, it, it just doesn't work. And so I would ask that we formally investigate what options exist that may bear some cost beyond simple restriping, because that, to me, is a Band-Aid. And, and these neighborhoods are going to continue to suffer this impact. And Turnberry in particular, here we've, in two sites, and I think even more so with Turnberry by siding our city park right next to this school and sharing that radius. And the other majority of that neighborhood is yet to build out. We have a problem that we have to solve and figure out how to solve for the long-term safety of the community. And again, you want people to relish having, be glad to have the school in the neighborhood and glad to have the park in the neighborhood. And right now, I'm afraid, you know, people curse those two things.
I can't agree with you more, Jason. I have been receiving complaints from the Turnberry neighborhood. It's not developed out yet. Last thing we want to see is property owners losing their, their privacy and their parking in, in front of their own homes. To me, it just seems like they're being designed with too small a parking lots. And I noticed there's a field that a ton of cars were parked in that is to the north of the school. And I don't know if there's still opportunities to get more parking in there, but it's going to be a problem forever.
I, I think it's a good point to look at what land is available to expand parking on-site as, in addition to what we do on the street. But I think the street itself has to be part of that solution, because even with some additional off-street parking, you still have a very tight corridor and, again, folks losing the ability to park in front of that home.
Mr. Douglas?
Yeah, I'd say, well, I've been having, saying complaints sent to me, different folks addressing the fact they have to give up their residential parking. Their signs are already on that side that say, this is not, you don't, you're, you're about to pick up your child on the side of the street. But now, those, those senior residents are asked that not be able to park in front of their homes, you have to park across the street. That same thing is happening over here by Frontier Park. I know there was agreement with those, those residents over there, and so far it's working. But to go back and tell these folks over here at Turnberry that they're going to have to participate in, in some sort of off, meaning across the street parking, is not acceptable at all. And in looking at a map here of Turnberry, I think we can, Councilman, um, Councilman McAdonie was addressing, there's quite a bit of open land at the Turnberry, and maybe even if the parents have to park more to the north, going down Turnberry Parkway, make an adjustment that way, because there is adjustment of land if we work with the school district to add extra parking in and out. And, because that, that is a big concern. About every other day, someone's come to me talking about that. And I was going to bring that in council administration business, and since it was brought up, it's a good time to, to address that, so.
Mr. McBroom, you have something to add?
I appreciate Councilman McAdonie's comments and Mr. Douglas's comments. In the short time I've been with the city, parking issues, traffic issues seem to pop up around every elementary school throughout the community. Our practice has been to respond to them sort of one at a time as issues flare up. So I appreciate the suggestion to perhaps take a broader look at some of the common themes that are contributing to problems at all of these school sites and look... Our practice has been to respond to them sort of one at a time as issues flare up, so I appreciate the suggestion to perhaps take a, a broader look at some of the common themes that are contributing to problems at all of these school sites, and look, uh, perhaps more broadly at some more comprehensive solutions. What I might suggest as a first step is, uh, have us start to do some of that, uh, more high-level analysis of all the elementary school sites, 'cause I'm, I'm worried that we've had issues at Central Elementary in the core city, we've had issues at, uh, Bell Creek. It's, um, but we don't address them all at the same time, we, we seem to be addressing them a bit piecemeal, so perhaps that's a good first step for us, take, uh, some time, do some higher-level analysis, and schedule a study session sooner rather than later with city council to talk through what are some of the alternatives to take a, a broader look at how we solve these problems in general. Uh, I've, I've seen emails, uh, from folks in Turnberry, uh, but I don't think there are any good solutions, there's no perfect solution anyway, and the emphasis will always lean towards, uh, protecting public safety first. Uh, but there may be other alternatives there that, that we can look at in a, in a more broad sense, so I appreciate the comments.
Thank you. Alright, Mr. Amador.
So I'm, I'm gonna hold my comments on the, uh, parking issues and school districts and parks and what the city has control of until the, uh, study session, so I'll, I have some thoughts there. But, uh, uh, one of the, uh, reports that I do have is that Adams fourteen actually, uh, has to, uh, come up with a facilities naming, uh, committee, and so I, I was appointed, uh, last week, or a couple of weeks ago now, um, to their naming committee, and it was fueled by, um, naming the new Adams City High School swimming pool to, uh, Joseph Snaros, uh, swimming facility. And so those meetings start, uh, tomorrow, and it's a three-year appointment, so that's just a report. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Teeter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, unbeknownst to you, Mr. Mayor, we did have our employees luncheon last Wednesday, and I can see two people in the audience right now that did receive awards. Uh, one was Laura, I believe it was five years, ten years, I'm sorry, see, and was it Roger, was it twenty-five years? See, I tried to get, I got those two mixed up somehow. But anyway, I know Roger and Laura both received awards last Wednesday along with, uh, a lot of other employees, we had, I think, Kimmy Moore at thirty or thirty-five? Yeah, we had a couple of them at thirty or thirty-five, um, Alan Trudell was another one, thirty-five I believe it was, so we had a lot of, uh, we have a lot of employees that we did receive, uh, the awards last Wednesday, and it was nice weather, it wasn't raining finally. So I wanted to make sure that, uh, and congratulations all the ones that did get their awards, and, um, and for staff for allowing them to have a second luncheon.
Thanks, Rick. Councilwoman Carson.
Well, I hate to do it, but I'm gonna throw us back into the Turnberry conversation, because I did receive two complaints, but mine were for painted crosswalks. Um, saying that they really need that to get safely across the street to and from school and the park, so, um, I was gonna take a drive over there and look, and I didn't, um, but, um, I, I think we can solve that one fairly simple. And then my second note is, uh, youth commission, the youth commission is, is back, meeting. Um, any of those youth in our city who are interested in joining, please check out the website, you can fill out the application online, they're due right now, um, but I'm sure, actually, you probably have about two weeks or so to get those in, and it's for youth between ages of thirteen and nineteen, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas.
Uh, yes, just wanna add that, um, last week, attended the CML Fall District Meeting out in Lone Tree Art Center, and, um, if, uh, our counselors get a chance to go look at the art center, um, very nice facility, they did very well with that. I also attended Adams City, uh, Middle School, uh, back-to-school night, and that night they had the boys' football game against, uh, Pinnacle, and, uh, I don't wanna say what the outcome and score was, uh, but they won, um, it was large numbers. I also attended Commerce City Business Professional fifth annual meeting with, uh, Congressman Ed Perlmutter over at Rock Mountain Wildlife Refuge, and, um, that was a, a great event, that was always nice to hear from our congressman. Uh, he was talking about, uh, aerospace that were per capita number one in the United States, and, uh, we have, maybe have some opportunities to have a, a space and science campus, we'd like to entertain that on a new, um, dog track as an option, uh, as a, an education, educational piece. That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Mr. Bullock.
Also wanna, uh, we had the joint meeting with, uh, twenty-seven J and the Brighton City Council, um, on the thirtieth of August, and, um, on the first of, uh, September, we had, um, which is coming up tonight, uh, our neighborhood meeting with the Mile High Greyhound Park over at Century, Central Elementary School, and, uh, CCCBPA after-hours event at the Bison Grill on the thirty-first. So, I mean, we were out so long that we had so many events, I think most of us were at most of the events, but a lot of them, we kinda forgot, because it's been such a long period of time. Okay, thank you.
Alright. Now I'm gonna go back to Councilwoman Carson.
I forgot, happy birthday, Mr. Mayor.
You too, Councilwoman Carson. Yours, yours has already been. Oh, yeah, but, uh, um, it, it, some big numbers. For me. I'm not talking about you, for me.
Frog hair numbers.
Big numbers, big numbers. See how I covered myself on that one? I almost got in trouble, I saw that look and said, oh, no, I'm talking about me. Alright, if there be no further business to come before the city council this evening, we're adjourned. But hold your seats, 'cause I'm calling to, to order the meeting of the, uh, Urban Renewal Authority Meeting, I'd ask the secretary to call the roll.